Chris, would you mind getting us started with an invocation?
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you this evening and Jesus, we thank you so much for this city. Lord, we thank you for the people that make up this city. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy towards us. Most of all, we thank you, Jesus, for giving your life for our sins. We pray tonight that you will cover this city, that you'll protect this city, Lord, in the times that we live in, that you will be our strength and our refuge. God, we pray over this meeting in particular that you will guide us in your wisdom, Holy Spirit, and that you will direct every word that is said, every decision that is made, and everything that is done. And Lord, we will give you all praise and all glory in the strong and mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Chris Muncie is youth pastor at Open Door Community Church. Thank you for being here. I now call the 2015 Regular Meeting of City Council to order. And we'll start by pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask Mrs. Hoffman to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. You received a copy of the minutes for the September 1st, 2015 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? I have one if nobody else does. I'd like the minutes to reflect in the seventh paragraph, I would like to revise the last three words there instead of saying mistaken. If we could just say, the sentence reads, "He spoke to Mrs. Kyle in regard to her speech at the October 18th, 2015 Committee Meeting and advised her that she was mistaken." I'd like to take out "she was mistaken" and say, "He did not send a letter to the Tea Party." If we could make that revision. Are there any other corrections? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented with the correction. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Kyle? Second by Mrs. Sudcamp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. You received a copy of the agenda for the October 6th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt it. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so we'll move on to special presentations. The first item here under special.
Presentations, okay.
Yeah, I didn't see Mr. Sully in the audience.
Is Mr. Sully in the audience? No? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and skip over that. And we'll move on to the oath of office. Mr. Whitaker? I'm sorry, Chief Whitaker, excuse me.
He'll answer to either one.
Hmm. Is this for me? Should I go ahead and? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll do a little introduction.
All right, great.
You guys have missed me, haven't you?
Yes.
I can tell. Good evening. Tonight, we are welcoming a new member to the Fire EMS Department. We are going to welcome firefighter/paramedic Brian Schwartz to the department. Brian, come on up here. Brian comes to us from Ohio. He's a Fairmont High School graduate. He also is a graduate of Sinclair Community College where he got his EMT/paramedic certification. He's just a couple hours away from that associate's and I'm going to make sure that he gets that. He currently lives in Kettering, Ohio, but here's the good news. He hopes to relocate locally once he's established himself here at Erlanger. So I told him in two weeks, he's established and we'll get him over here. Few of Brian's likes include working out, off-roading with his Jeep, backpacking and camping. Some of his dislikes, and this is going to be interesting in the fire service, he doesn't like shrimp, steak, or spiders. So he just gave us all kinds of fuel. So I'm sure they got shrimp, steak, and spiders. They'll forget all about it. We are thrilled to have him. He is a great addition and as a department and as chief now for almost two years, I don't pat myself on the back often or as a department, but I tell you what, we as an organization have brought in quality people and he continues that for us. He is a great young man. We're thrilled to have him. I'm going to pin him and you guys, please welcome Brian Schwartz to our department. Okay. Do you have a Bible for him?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I believe his mother is going to assist him with that. This is news to her, by the way. That is his mother, Lee, and I see Uncle Pete and Aunt Joan are also here.
Step one up.
You can go down. Nice badge.
If you would put your left hand on the Bible, right hand. Here.
Dad Mike and Sister Katie have made the scene.
Excellent. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, so I, Brian Schwartz, do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter/paramedic for the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the city of Erlanger. So help me, God. All right, welcome.
Okay, two weeks, we'll see you as a resident.
Yeah. Love it over here.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Public Works Department Recognition. Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, actually, Mayor, I'd like to invite the Public Works Department up. Gentlemen, if you could come up up front, I want to talk about a special thing that we just found out about you folks. Come on up here, guys. So as I go up there, you may not recognize the faces or you may recognize the faces, but those are the people that are, actually, get up, get up front there. These are the guys, these are the guys that are mowing your grass, these are the guys that are plowing your streets. People in the room.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Good day, Kevin.
Make sure Ralph's behind the camera.
I'll need to shave, get haircuts. Geez, what is this?
We also have Ralph behind the camera there. He's the Wizard of Oz, so he's not up there, but we do, you know, this is the Public Works Team. And I just want to talk about something that occurred since June. So if you didn't know, in June, the Public Works Department was asked to perform an internal efficiency audit. So we were looking at how well they were doing their job and what the cost was to you, the citizens of Erlanger. This audit was a comparison of the city's public works mowing operations compared to a private service. So we actually delved into this. We went out to three different services and looked at the costs that they would, they would give, you know, they would have the city do to do the mowing that these guys do. Public Works Leadership Team did a great job. They developed a task list, a list of the properties, the mowing schedule, and total man-hours necessary to maintain our parks and rideaways. If you guys have been to our parks, if you were just at our, you know, our festival here in the fall, you know what a nice job they do maintaining those. The team also calculated the cost to the city to provide the service. This included man-hours, their average hourly rate, and this was loaded, this includes their benefits, any preventive maintenance that they did, equipment maintenance, repairs, parts, depreciation, and the fuel cost. So they added everything into that. Now, if you think about that, that sounds like a lot of money, doesn't it? Well, it is, but in the long run, if you look at what happened, I'm proud to report that out of all the three services we compared ourselves to, the closest price was over 50% higher than the cost of this team up here. Woo-hoo! So not only are we saving you that money, but I want to talk about, this is only the small part they do, the preventive maintenance and the maintenance they perform in-house is extending the life of their equipment. So I'm a story-type guy, I like to tell stories. They have a mower that they've been doing that's been in service for 15 years. 15 years, cutting that grass every summer, every week, going out there and do those things. That's 15 years. You want to talk about return on investment, these gentlemen are living it every day and making sure that equipment's there, ready to go, ready to make those parks beautiful, ready to make sure your streets are clean when the snow hits. So, you know, we know about the efficiency and the cost effectiveness we're performing, they're performing right now, but I want to talk a little bit more about the quality about these public work professionals. And yes, they are public work professionals. Cutting grass is not the only service being provided when they're out there on the mowers. If you go out there and you talk to these gentlemen, they're using this time to interact with many citizens, they answer questions, they address concerns, they are identifying and immediately fixing any hazards to your family or you while you're out there. They're making sure those parks are safe for you to go out there and also beautiful. So what do you get with this team? Not only do you get that cost effectiveness that we just talked about, but you're getting pride. Pride in the work they do, pride in the service they provide, pride in their role in maintaining the city parks and rideaways. So when you see that patch, you know that there's someone that cares about the city. And I really want to personally thank you, gentlemen, for that. Did we get enough pictures?
As always.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
Take care of him, keep him in line. We know you do it.
That's great, thank you. Mr. Cahill? Thank you, Ralph, for wearing a pink shirt.
You're next, sister.
Okay, next up on the agenda is our Service Award Ceremony. What we've all been waiting for, too. First up, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Wilson.
Tonight, I have the honor and privilege to present Ms. Sudcamp with a very special pen. Come up here, Mrs. Sudcamp. You're not going to make me stand up here all by myself, are you?
You forgot to put that one next to that three, didn't you? Close that three to an eight, wasn't it?
Councilman Sudcamp came to the city in 1968. And if my math is correct, that was the year I was born. You know I couldn't let that go. She came here with her beloved husband, Bruce, where they got, where they were married and they had and raised their three children. Patty joined the Life Squad, the volunteer Life Squad in Erlanger in 1980 and served on it for 11 years. She was on the Fire EMS Auxiliary for 20 years. She was a member of our, one of our first citizens' police academies. She was the chairperson of the 100-year anniversary celebration committee. She was on the Erlanger Elsmere Youth Service Board and Historical Society. She's been a member on and off of the Public Safety Committee for I don't know how many years. She served as the vice mayor for the city. How many years has that been? It's been a lot of years, I think three mayors, right?
Eighteen, eighteen years maybe. I don't know. Sixteen, I don't know.
So out of the 47 years she's lived here, she's served the citizens of this city for 35 of those. She's done a wonderful job. She brings a lot of caring and support to all the departments, along with some humor. She's great to have around. She's done wonderful work in the city for all the citizens. She's now helping on a daily basis raise her, or babysit, or whatever you want to call your grandchildren, which are here tonight. Some of them.
Yes.
So it is a great privilege and honor to present you with your 35-year service pen.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. I just turned 70, so 35 of my, one half of my life, I've dedicated to this city. Never regretted it for one single second. I'm telling you people, when you pay your taxes, you are paying to live in the greatest city in the world. And I truly believe that. If you knew these individuals personally, like I do, they are all my brothers and sisters. And I love you all and I thank you so much.
The suggestion should be 130. All right, the next service award we have is for Dale Wilson. Director Bogard?
Good evening, everybody. It's a great honor to present Mr. Wilson with his 15-year service pen. October of 2000, seems like yesterday. Yep, and he pulled up in the parking lot in his pickup truck to turn in his job application and Tim Beadham was standing with me and says, "Hey, I know that guy. We camped together." And so it's kind of been history since then. If you go around, and I could take you to numerous sites around the city where Dale has given his green thumb touch to some beautification projects throughout the city, and those are multiple, and his quality of work is reflected, you know, by just how he leads. So I could talk to you about everything with UK Basketball, how he loves his Wildcats and everything, but I think to simplify, the three important things to him are faith, his family that is with him back here, with all four of his grandchildren, and his friends. So Dale, brother, it's an honor to present this to you.
I want to thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for just giving me the opportunity. I tell you, it's been 15 quick years, but I've enjoyed it all. I really have. As the old saying goes, I can't think anywhere that I'd rather be than right here. And I thank you, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I truly mean that.
All right, the next service award we have is for Mr. Jim Molly, and I see that he is not present here tonight, so we'll move on. We'll move on to our, we've got four proclamations this evening, so please bear with me. Our first proclamation is for the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So to who, excuse me, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas October 2015 marks more than 30 years, the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public organizations, professional associations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates the United States more than 231,840 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women this year. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimate, estimate in the United States more than 2,150 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in men this year. And whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality. And whereas the 2.9 million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are a testament to courage as well as the importance of promoting self-awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October 2015 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Erlanger. And do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger on this sixth day of October 2015. And I would like to present this proclamation to Janet Chambers, who's here this evening from I Have Wings.
Those are grave statistics, aren't they? I mean, I hate to hear that, but yeah, over 40,000 women and now 2,000 men. A lot of people don't realize that men get breast cancer as well. So I'm a 16-year survivor. I was, thank you. I was diagnosed in 1999 and started I Have Wings Breast Cancer Foundation in 2002. That year, we helped four families. Now we help over 400 a year. And these are all local families in the tri-state area. I like to quote Winston Churchill. He once said, "A pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity." Am I squealing on this? No? Okay. An optimist sees opportunity in every difficulty. Breast cancer is a difficult diagnosis for many women. And the women I speak with have a grim outlook and they have a feeling of dread. They find it hard to work through their emotional side and they have an enormous worry from the diagnosis and the impending bills that come with it. So I'm so proud to represent I Have Wings Breast Cancer Foundation tonight as an Erlanger-based business charity. We support and inspire women and men all over the tri-state area with our No One Go Solo programs. I have left that information back here for all of you to pick up as you will. We support all races, all income levels, and all religious affiliations, and political affiliations. Others' difficulties gives us at I Have Wings an opportunity to allow the families and the individuals who are stressed during this difficult period of time to have some of the financial and the emotional burdens lifted. And then they are able to focus more on their own recovery and healing. We do this every day, every minute, every month, every year, whether it's providing food assistance to nourish the body of not just the woman, but the family, gas in their car, or taxi fare to get to and from their chemo appointments, or maybe it's giving back their much-needed self-esteem by footing the bill for prosthetics and wigs. Last year, over 50 families, we put a smile on the children's faces all over the tri-state for Christmas. I would have loved to have seen those children's faces when they opened gifts that otherwise the families would not have been able to afford. A typical story, and you might find this appalling, but I hear everything and I'm never surprised at anything I hear. So two weeks ago, a 50-something woman lost her daughter two years ago and ended up raising her two grandchildren. When she was diagnosed, her husband left. He couldn't take the fact that she was going to have a double mastectomy. And in his exit, he took their bed. That was leaving her to raise her two grandchildren and sleeping on the floor while doing chemotherapy. Well, fortunately, this year, we started a new program. It's called Linda Silverlining. And if you don't know the statistics, Kentucky is the number one state in the Union that has grandparents raising their grandchildren. I don't know why, but it is. So we see it a lot. So we started a program specifically for that. And for that particular woman, we bought her a new bed, headboard, footboard, mattress, box springs. We bought her sheets, pillows, blankets, and a new comforter. And I don't know any other breast cancer foundation that would take each individual case personally to try to relinquish and release the stress of that diagnosis. So I want to thank all of you tonight. And I'm proud to be a citizen, a resident of Erlanger, and I'm proud to have a business in Erlanger. And if you choose to support us, we're having a great event at the end of October. It's called Breastoberfest. How could that be more fun, right? We're wrapping up breast cancer awareness and we're also celebrating Oktoberfest and it's, we're turning Mercedes-Benz into a beer garden. Couldn't be more fun than that. So thank you very much. And please, pick up our information. If you have any questions, I'll be, I'll stay after the meeting. And one more thing, just one more thing. Last year, with the support of a lot of family and friends, I wrote a book. And it is, it's based a lot on my own cancer journey. It's meant to be inspirational for women and men who go through. And it's not necessarily a breast cancer journey, but any cancer journey. So I brought three of the books with me. If you know anyone that is going through a diagnosis and they have that grim outlook, please, please come up to me and let me sign one of these books for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
And thank you.
Can I mention something? Yes, please. Can we put that on our website? What she's doing and how to get ahold of them on our? I think that'd be great.
That's a great idea.
And maybe put it in the next whistle stop, little information for people to find. I think that's a great idea. Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Thanks. Yeah. I see Becky nodding back there, so I think that'd be possible. That's a great recommendation. Thank you, Kevin.
And it happens to be a personal friend of mine and I had a little bit of insight into her journey with us being dear friends. And I do not ever, ever, nor have I ever heard of an organization that's like hers. You know, Susan B. Coleman and all the rest, they're all research. She adopts cancer families. And every, so every little family she takes under her wing and whatever that particular family needs, they try and provide.
You know, if you've got a website, maybe give that to Becky so that people can use that also. Yeah. Yeah, she really is remarkable. And every person that I talk to, I've talked to at least a half dozen women who've worked with I Have Wings through the journey. And every one of them has some other way that she's helped that I would have never even thought would be, you know, would be a huge help. Anything from helping women with wigs.
Yeah.
You know, and you know, every, every one is a, is a new journey. So, yeah, thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next proclamation. We've got a proclamation for the Freedom From Workplace Bullies Week. To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas the city of Erlanger- Whereas the City of Erlanger has an interest. Am I saying that wrong?
I want Kevin to pay attention.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is that terrible?
Should I look at Kevin while I read this? Whereas the City of Erlanger has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its employees and citizens. And whereas that well-being depends upon the existence of healthy and productive employees working in safe and abuse-free environments. And whereas research has documented the stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments. And whereas abusive work environments are costly to employers with consequences including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, employee dissatisfaction, and injuries. And whereas protection from abusive work environments should apply to every worker and not limited to a legally protected class status. Now therefore, the Mayor and Council of the City of Erlanger do hereby proclaim October 18th through 24th, 2015, Freedom From Workplace Bullies Week. And commend the Kentucky Healthy Workplace Advocates and the Workplace Bully Institute, which raise awareness of the impacts of and the solutions for workplace bullying in Kentucky and the U.S. And encourage the citizens to mark this week with special activities and programs to break through the shame and silence and shrouded, and shrouding adult bullying at work. Including, included is a colorful poster to put up at work to encourage employee awareness All right, just two more. All right, the next one is the Fire Prevention Month. To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas Erlanger is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas cooking and, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries. While heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of home fire deaths. And whereas Erlanger's employees and volunteers are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education. And whereas Erlanger's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Those who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Month theme, Hear the Beep Where You Sleep. Every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Month a year and year round. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October 2015 to be Fire Prevention Month in Erlanger. And do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this sixth day of October 2015. Yes, Mr. Burke?
I'd like to ask Chief Whitaker, if people can't afford one, is there a place to get one?
Right now, our department does not have anything to give out. I've been talking to the Red Cross. The latest that I have from the Red Cross is in the spring of 16, they're planning a huge campaign. So for this month, there's, I don't know where to send it.
Okay. Thank you. How much, Chief, how much does those cost?
They range, they range. I mean, I'd say for a decent one, 15, 15, $20.
Let's say an organization makes a donation to the Erlanger Fire Department, can they go out and buy some that have them to be able to give out?
Well.
Or is that an issue? I mean, if it's a problem?
That's just the financial part of that. If we get any kind of donation, we get any check written to the fire department, we turn it over to finance. I don't, we don't take any kind of funding, you know, gifts. We've had.
This organization goes out, you hook us up with where we need to buy them, we'll buy them, we'll bring them to you, and you can hand them out.
There's no problem in that.
I'll talk to you.
At one time, we had, I think we gave some out, didn't we?
We used to.
We used to give them out, but I mean, I know the times.
And we've had quite a few people come up because of this month as well. There's a lot of people come up and it's, they'd say we just don't have any to give out.
Well, I understand. I just wanted, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you. No problem. You know where I'm going with that.
Yep.
All right. And then our final proclamation is regarding the Extra Mile Day. To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas the City of Erlanger is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the City of Erlanger is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the, the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas the City of Erlanger is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the City of Erlanger acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 400 extra mile cities in America, and it's proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2015. And whereas I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2015 to be Extra Mile Day in Erlanger. And do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City on this sixth day of October 2015. Thank you for your patience. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Report. So it's been another busy month. I want to thank Dave Hahn for sitting up here. Mark Fields is on vacation right now, and Dave is filling in for Mark this week. As a lot of you are aware, the Showcase Cinema Building is down now. And they have only gotten a permit to go ahead and tear the building down. There are, at this point, there are no plans. They haven't shared any plans with us, other than raising the building. Tomorrow morning, Convergys is going to be, is going to have a grand reopening. Convergys on Doewick. Right now, they have 600 employees at that facility. And they have reworked their office to double their staff. They are hiring 600 new people. And they are reopening tomorrow morning as, you know, a new renovated office. So excited to see that. Yeah, that's incredible. I wanted to mention too, we've got, it looks like we have a vacancy on our Board of Adjustments. And so I wanted to just reiterate, if anybody has someone that they would recommend, you know, I think would be preferable, preferable if we could have somebody that would have a little bit of experience with property zoning laws, things like that, if they would be willing to volunteer on that board. If anybody has any recommendations, I'm, I'm open to that. So please share that with me. Missy and I were able to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Annual Conference last week, and that was, that was phenomenal. That was my first time attending that, and that was very worthwhile. It was in Owensboro. And I didn't get to see Owensboro. I only saw a hotel room and the conference center. But, but it was enlightening. Got a lot of great ideas from a lot of other cities and a lot of the speakers and presenters that were there. It was, it was really great. So appreciated that opportunity. Mr. Gatlin, Mr. Fields, and myself are still working on the rental permit ordinance. There's some small tweaks that we're doing to that ordinance, and we are going to continue working on that when Mark gets back. Many of you may or may not be aware that Mr. Hahn and Becky Hopkins and myself have been attending meetings with some of the businesses around Erlanger, making rounds to, to talk and discuss. And, and it's been a learning, a learning event for all of us, figuring out the things that people like about Erlanger, things that people may not like about Erlanger, but it's been great regardless, and it's been good to get around. And, and we're trying to, trying to get to at least one or two cities, or one, one or two businesses, excuse me, every month around the city. And we, as you are aware also, we're continuing to work on the Norfolk Southern Bridge. And Mr. Vioxx is not here this evening to talk about any update on the, the traffic plan for that, but we are working on that. The last thing I had to announce was the Monster House. We're going to be playing the movie Monster House on October 17th at 5:30. And I don't know if anybody else was going to announce that or not. Did I take, did I steal your thunder? Okay. I'll let you, I'll let you say where it's going to happen.
Why am I here?
All right. All right, Kathy. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and move on to the reports of the committees. Public Safety, Police, Ms. Sudkamp? It's Kyle.
Well, we wanted to read the letter that, because on August the 6th, 2015, several officers were involved in an Elsmere officer-involved shooting, double homicide. Erlanger Dispatch Patrol Command Staff and Clerks assisted with the response. And while the Kentucky State Police are investigating the deaths, Erlanger assisted with the response. Sergeant Rice, in particular, was commended by Elsmere officials and Kentucky State Police, as was the rest of the Erlanger responding officers. And Ms. Sudkamp has a letter that she would like to read.
This was sent to Chief Tony Wilson. And this was, I'm reading this letter because this is just typical of how, how important it is that we work with other cities. It, it's crucial because one department cannot handle a situation similar to this. And, and our communication center always is the stepchild. And it never works without dispatch because they give everybody all the information that everybody needs. That being said, in the evening hours of August the 6th, 2015, Officers Mike Metzger, Steve Panko, David Finan, and Adam Riggsby responded to a residence on Seneca Trail for the report of a female being stabbed. Shortly after arriving on the scene, Officer Metzger entered the trailer. The three remaining officers were unable to enter the trailer due to Metzger being confronted by a man with a knife after he entered the doorway. At one point, the suspect attempted to close the front, front door, which would have let Metzger and the trailer alone with the armed assailant. Officer Panko and Riggsby were positioned at the front door, and Officer Rigby was able to push the door open and prevent Metzger from being alone inside the trailer. Unfortunately, Officer Metzger was forced to employ deadly physical force to defend himself. Officer Panko, Riggsby, and Finan then began securing the scene and requesting medical attention. A very short time later, Sergeant Todd Rice arrived on the scene and began, began setting up an outer perimeter, controlling the crowd, identifying and separating potential witnesses. Detectives from the Kentucky State Police were requested to investigate the incident. There were several witnesses and children that needed to be separated and interviewed. Your agency volunteered to assist with this aspect of the investigation and provided the location and support to accomplish this daunting task. If I were to begin naming individuals, including you, which is Chief Wilson, and Lieutenant Colonel Egler that assisted that night, I would certainly miss someone. However, I would be remiss if I did not commend Officer Adam Riggsby and Sergeant Todd Rice for their actions during and immediately following this incident. Both officers performed in the professional manner that is a trademark of the Erlanger Police Department. I commend them for a job well done. The assistance provided by Erlanger Police Department was tremendous. As always, the Erlanger Communication Center provided pertinent, up-to-date information and support. Please extend our heartfelt gratitude to your entire staff. Chief, our departments have a longstanding relationship, and we have always worked together to make our community a safe place to live. The events of August the 6th not only served to reinforce our special relationship, I want to personally thank you and the members of your agency for that assistance. Colonel Tim Thang, Elsmere Police Department. There were, the mother and father were, were killed, and the children were there and witnessed. I mean, this was probably the most horrific thing that I've heard about in a long time. And city staff came out of the woodwork to take care of these children back here at the station. I mean, I just can't commend everybody enough. And you all just need to realize what a blessing it is that we have a good working relationship with our sister cities. We can't do it alone.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief's in the house. You have anything else to abuse me about, sir?
As soon as I was, as soon as I took over the department, Lieutenant Colonel Egler and I decided, among the two of us, that it was a good idea with the levels and the frequency of the violence that our officers were encountering. The officer-involved shootings were going way up. We decided to contact the Kentucky State Police and ask them to handle any officer-involved shooting that we were involved in, so that we had an objective agency do the investigation so there was no hint of any wrongdoing on our part. The letter was still on the desk of the lieutenant who was over their investigation section, but we had already inquired as to what they needed from us in one of these events. So in our talks with Elsmere, they were on the same page with us. And when this occurred, after, the trooper response was, was amazing. They had five troopers there within an hour of the incident going out over the radio. And we normally don't see troopers in this area at all. After it was all said and done, the captain, the post commander of Post 6 in Dry Ridge, told us that that was the best scene that they had come to in many, many years across the state. We had done exactly what needed to be done, and it did take a massive effort. Some of the people that we didn't think about in this was our, our front desk clerks. They came up and they brought, we had several small children and a lot of them didn't speak English, but they brought up toys, they brought up food, coloring books, blankets. It was kind of a cool night. The kids had... blankets. It was kind of a cool night. The kids had run out of the trailer because of what was going on, so they didn't have clothes or anything like that, shoes or anything. So Lucy Riffle came up, Lisa Hucker came up, and helped us with the kids, and Detective Stoltz came in. So the effort on our police department in conjunction with Elsmere was just phenomenal. All the officers performed expertly. It was just, it was an amazing performance. The training that we do really proved this point that night. It was, you know, nothing worked out good for the people over there, but, you know, the compliments that we received from Elsmere Chief and the Kentucky State Police just lends credence to everything that we've been working for to handle situations like this. Even though it didn't have a positive outcome, we know that we're doing the right thing and that our people are more dedicated than we could ever imagine. So, thank you for reading that.
My pleasure.
Children were placed with other family members somewhere in Ohio. I'm not real sure. They were, had four kids, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Lieutenant?
Oh, right.
That's a great idea.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Aren't you proud, Tyson?
I am.
Aren't you?
Yeah, I mean-
Our city is incredible.
Yeah. It is touching. And it, but it all, yeah. It's tough to put it into words. It's difficult to hear that. I mean, it really is. But the reality is-
That's why I felt the need to read it.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, because we just don't appreciate what they're confronted with.
Oh, right. Absolutely. On a daily basis. It's amazing. I'm thankful that they all stay safe as well. Our police, our firefighters, our EMTs, and our public workers. I worry about them every day.
Yeah.
All right. The next item we have is Public Safety, Fire, and EMS. Skidmore, Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go first.
Okay.
And since it's Fire Prevention Month, it's gonna be a little bit different here. Public education, the total students reached in the month of September was 1,737. That included a fire truck tour at the Baptist Village, a neighborhood party in Brightleaf, Heritage Days at Railroad Depot, firehouse tour, a fire drill at Convergy's, that had a total of 400 people, homecoming parade for Lloyd High School, there's 500 people there, fire drill at Convergy's, fire extinguisher training at Signature Hardware, and the Neighborhood Parade at Woodland Hills. And Firefox, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a home fire in half. Three out of five home fire deaths happen from fires in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. When smoke alarms fail to operate, it is usually because batteries are missing, disconnected, or dead. Half of the home fire deaths result from fires reported between, excuse me, 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM when most people are asleep. You want to add anything here?
Yeah.
They already addressed that.
Okay.
Remember, hear the beep where you sleep, and every bedroom needs a working fire alarm, smoke alarm.
I have nothing else to add. Chief?
Chief Whitaker in the house?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last meeting, I discussed doing a putting for the caboose. The Erlanger Historical Society is working on refurbishing the caboose that sits at the Depot Museum Park. We did do our fundraiser. It was at Erlanger Putt Putt. Kevin Shea is the owner, and he's worked with us. This is the third event that we've held there. They do a wonderful job. It was September 20th from 5 to 8. It was right after Heritage Day. First, if, it's all right, I like to go through the thank yous. We did whole sponsors. First off, Putt Putt, of course, for letting us hold that there. I'd like to thank Linda Dietz. Stand up, Linda. Come on. Linda went out and solicited most of the whole sponsors that we did receive. So thank you, Linda, for helping us with that. We had City of Erlanger, the Administration Department, they had theirs in, I think, the day of, City of Erlanger Public Works, Erlanger Fire EMS Blue Shift, Blankenship Massian Associates, Wickman Law Office, Hermes Construction, Councilman Blankenship, Boone County Lumber, Cherry Hill Swim Club, Colonial Cottage, Dixie Chili, Grammer's Market, Don's Garage, Dixie Club Cafe, Erlanger Pet Resort and Day Spa, Husing Veterinary, Hegadornt Appliances, Jack's Glass, Erlanger Veterinary Hospital, Lee Harky Auto Body, Mary Lou Dry Cleaners, Northern Kentucky Women in Blue, the Optimist Club of Covington, the Erlanger Police Explorers Post 2055, Salvador's Pizzeria, Swinford Jewelers, and Lindeman Funeral Home. It's quite a list. And with the people that attended the Putt Putt event, we were able to raise $1,500 to go towards refurbishment of the caboose. The Vice President of the Erlanger Historical Society, Mr. Paul Duzing, is here to accept the check on their behalf.
And it is signed.
I can't tell you what this means to us. Thank you so much. Can I take a minute here? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow councilmen and ladies. The Historical Society, well, first of all, the President of the Historical Society is Mr. Jack Shaven, and he's physically unable to attend. And I know he would love to be up here to talk about this. Pat Hahn, who's Secretary of the Historical Society, is out of town. But everybody knows that the Historical Society runs because of the women. We do a lot of the lifting. I do a lot of IT work and meetings and what have you. But while I have an opera, well, first, let me tell you what we're going to do with this money. $1,500. We're in the neighborhood of $7,000 at the present time, I believe, in our efforts to raise money to repair the inside of the caboose. The outside's being taken care of by the city and people in Progressive and down Latonia. And they ran into some trouble once they got under the hood. And I'm afraid when we get under the hood also on the inside, we don't know what we're gonna find. So we can't say how much money we will need, but we will need enough. And we will put it to good use. The inside of the caboose, the plan is to make that a static display, or an extension, or an annex of the current museum. So you can go inside the caboose when we're finished, and you'll see railroad memorabilia and whatever else the ladies decide is important to go inside there. So it's an extension of the museum, and that's what it's gonna be. And since I'm the 67, almost 67 years old, and I'm the youngest member of the Historical Society, it's important that we get this right. So we're doing it well. The city's doing it well. While I have the microphone, and I would like to ride along on the coattails of Mr. Cahill and brag about the city officials, public works, and all the people involved in putting Heritage Day together, which also benefits the Historical Society and the Depot. The park, I can't tell you how many comments we got about how beautiful the park was. I don't care what city you go to, that park was shining that day. And I worked firsthand with all those guys on that day as the MC of Ceremonies, Master Ceremonies, in making all the nuts and bolts work, making the PA work, and things of that nature. And they did an exemplary job. The Fire and EMS and the Police Department did as well. And we thank you. We thank you. The city, you did a fine job. The mayor may not tell you, but he got an award that day as well on behalf of the city as a local hero. Mayor of Elsmere got one. And the Historical Society received one also, and I believe that was from the Elsmere Baptist Church. They recognize local heroes. They gave one to the manager of Krogers for what he does for the people that live in this community. And like I said on Sunday at the Heritage Day, that there's really one community here, and it's a shame the highway's in the middle, because everybody here is really in the same community. Heritage Day preparation meetings took place over eight months or so. And this year, Elsmere officials were in the meetings. And not only did the city officials from Erlanger do all that work and get everything working, the City of Elsmere had officials there. And I asked them on a number of different occasions, can we, and they said yes. Didn't even hesitate. City of Elsmere and Erlanger worked together. It was a joint venture to pull off Heritage Day. And again, this year, we were told it was the largest crowd ever, and it was just wonderful. And they do a great job. And I had another thought that I wanted to bring up, but I can't think of it. But the Historical Society thanks you, the Erlanger Firefighters Association, Erlanger Firefighters and the Professional Firefighters Association for the work you did, and Linda. And I would like the names of those people that you just read off to end up over at the Depot so that they can put it in their newsletter as well, and put it up on our website. And we're pumping juice into our website as well currently. We're getting ready to contract with somebody to beef that up as well. So we'll be shining. And again, thank you for everything you do for the Historical Society and the countless hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours these women put in to make this thing work. And if you haven't been to the Depot in a while, come and see us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duzing. I also want to take a second to thank the Skidmoors as well for running the carriage rides throughout the course of the day. In the past, we've had one carriage ride running, and this year we had two. And I don't know that it ever left without being full. And it ran all day. And Renee gave that tour. How many times do you think you said that?
Was it four hours? Probably 10 at least, at least.
Oh, I bet. I bet it was more than that.
I still had to read it.
Yeah. That's good. I got to sit in on the last one of those tours, and it was good. I really appreciated it. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is our Public Works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, sir. Just want to talk about the street repairs that are going on. Division Street, weather permitting, should be done the 1st of November. Enterprise Drive, the catch basins and storm line portions, project is underway. And of course, there's the emergency repair of Lake Mont Drive has begun, and we anticipate by the 6th that to be done. Mr. Bogart? Okay. So the other two, the other thing too is want to talk about walkahead.org and join and support our team, Beadham 49, as we walk run on Sunday, October 25th, to honor the life of Tim Beadham and support the research and educational efforts of the UC Brain and Tumor Center. And I do have a quick thank you letter from the ASA Magnificent Five, and that's, Ms. Hoffman really heads that up. Right?
Yes.
Yes. So, Dear Director Bogart, the City of Erlanger is committed to supporting the men and women who protect our freedom and country every day. The city, through legislation, made a commitment to adopt the unit from the 101st Airborne Division located at Fort Campbell in Kentucky. Erlanger was assigned Bravo Battery from the 1st Battalion, 1320th Field Artillery Regiment, 2nd Brigade. For this program to be successful, each department must contribute during their part to support Bravo Battery. Many cities have adopted troops, support these brave men and women while they're fighting overseas. Unfortunately, these same men and women are forgotten when they return home. Through fundraising programs that are cities, they ask Magnificent Five, Erlanger, Crescent Springs, Villa Hills, Lasik Park, and Elsmere are able to offer support to our troops when overseas and when stationed stateside. Our most recent fundraiser consisted of selling eight-inch mums. These gorgeous plants were brought by A.J. Ron Greenhouses. And since that Ohio, City of Erlanger sold 155 plants. Our team would like to extend our gratitude and appreciation to the Public Works Department for doing their part. We thank 10 members, Brian Ralston, Jason Ives, for collecting the mums and delivering them to the city building so they could be distributed for those who purchased them. We also want to thank Ralph Snyder and Rod Snow for their assistance as well. These men are truly engaged employees who honor the city's mission statement daily with integrity and pride, and that is what they do. Sincerely, Sherri Hoffman, Michael Janssen, and Kim Walking. So. And that's all I have. Mr. Bogart's in the house.
What's the asshole line open?
When's the pothole line open?
Uh-
Yeah.
That's Tom's favorite time of the year.
Do we have an anticipated date for the caboose to return?
No, sir. We do not. Ran into a few metal problems once they got the windows out, so that work is gonna be a bit of a concern for the day.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, then the next item on the agenda is Administration. Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes, Mayor. We have one legislative item on our agenda for the light duty program, and we are just gonna report progress at this time. And we're still meeting on that light duty program, so let y'all know about that. We have a couple of dates we need to bring to your attention. Let everybody know that trick-or-treating in Erlanger will take place on October 31st from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And make sure, take care of those little kitties when they come knocking on your door. So encourage your kitties not to go to the doors with lights out. Make sure they go to the doors with lights on, so they don't-
Costume.
That's a good, that's a good program to take care of. Also, on 2015 Ludenole Symposium, which was supposed to be this spring, is now set for Saturday morning, October the 17th, at the Learning Center in Covington. Reservations are required, so if anybody's interested in going to that program, please call the city and let them know that you're interested. It is a great, it's a great symposium to go to. I've been to it several times along with several other cities. I'm looking forward to going to it again this time. And we got somebody from Water District, Planning and Zoning's gonna be there, the Sanitation District, and somebody from I love very much from the Transit Authority in Northern Kentucky. So please, I encourage you all to come to that if you get a chance. So.
All right.
Again, we've got a few more announcements here.
The tax bills were mailed out on 9/30, September the 30th. So if you have not gotten yours by now, you need to get in touch with the city building and see where yours is, and see if it got sent back for some reason. And then October the 17th is the Halloween event at the Railroad Depot. This year, it will start from, it'll be from 5:30 to 9:30, and we'll have carnival games for the kids, 12 and under, and then it, like I said, till 5:30, and with a mad scientist magician. An outdoor movie feature, Monster House. It's 7:15. I believe if it's rainy or bad, the carnival part would cancel, but the movie will be at Erlanger Baptist Church. Okay? So that would begin at 7:15. You can contact Kim Walking or Becky Hopkins if you would like to help for that event at 727-2525. Then on October the 28th, we team with the library for a Halloween event. It's a Wednesday, and that's from 6:30 to 7:30. Enjoy Halloween stories and trick-or-treating at the library. Costumes are encouraged. This event is brought to you by the City of Erlanger and the Erlanger Library. And then on November the 1st, there will be roller skating, and that is from 6:30 to 9:00 at Independence Skateway located at 1637 Independence Road, Independence, Kentucky. And I think that's it.
All right, wonderful. Ms. Andrews is in the house? All right. All right, then the next item on the agenda is Economic Development and Finance. Mr. Blankenship, Mrs. Pitts?
Thank you. The auditors have completed their field work and are currently working on preparing a draft of the audit report. We expect to receive a copy of that draft on or about October the 19th. After we receive the draft, we're gonna proof the document and complete the management discussion, analysis, and transmit a letter. And we hope to have a formal presentation of the audit report at the November Finance Committee meeting. One other thing also, we received our bill for the month, the invoice from Wickman and Associates. I'd like to make a motion that be approved for payment.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Pitts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. I've not seen the bill yet. I'm not comfortable with approving it.
Okay. All right, then the motion carries. All right. Is there anything else, Mr. Blankenship?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay.
Greg's in the house.
Yes.
Mr. Angelman?
All right.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Codes, Building, and Zoning.
Okay.
Dunhoff, Mr. Burke?
It's gonna be lengthy, so sorry.
Mr. Dunhoff's got six pages to read.
It seemed like when I started reading today. Okay. At a previous council committee meeting, Dave Hahn made a short presentation concerning the changing the zoning classification of two areas. The first would be in Dixie Highway from the underpass to the Boone County line, changing the zone of-
All right.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Codes, Building, and Zoning.
Okay.
Dunhoff, Mr. Burke?
It's going to be lengthy, so sorry.
Mr. Dunhoff's got six pages to read.
It seemed like when I started reading today. Okay. At a previous council committee meeting, Dave Hahn made a short presentation concerning the changing the zoning classification of two areas. The first would be in Dixie Highway from the underpass to the Boone County line, changing the zone of these properties by eliminating the Renaissance Protection requirement for those properties in this area. And also changing the zoning of a small piece of property under contract to be purchased by CVS from residential 1F to R1F to neighborhood commercial NC. At the June 2nd, 2015, and the July 5th, 2015 city council meeting, council director Dave Hahn defiled an application with the Kenton County Planning Commission, KCPC, to change the zoning of the above areas at the September 3rd, 2015 KCPC meeting. They voted to recommend approval of both the city applications to change the zones as presented. So the committee were making a recommendation to our city attorney, Jack Gatlin, to draft the necessary ordinance to agree with the KCP's recommendation. Okay, secondly, at the August 18th, 2015 council committee meeting, Dave Hahn brought up a request by Camps Pallets to change the zoning of their property located at 30 Kenton Land Road from Industrial 1 IP1 to Industrial Park 4 IP4, and to amend the text to eliminate the section of the IP4 zone, which prohibits outdoor activity and allow outdoor activity provided it is screened from view from adjoining properties and right of ways. At the September 1st, 2015 council meeting, council authorized Dave Hahn to file an application with the KCPC to make these amendments. Jack will read a resolution under the legislation part of the agenda authorizing Dave to file the application. Okay, this is the long one, and I hope I can read it without messing up. As everyone is aware, Fifth Third Bank at Dixie and Cave Run is closed, and Aldi is closing in December. Both of these properties have development plans associated with them. These development plans were approved by the Planning Commission and the city in 1993. These development plans are causing issues as nothing can be redeveloped on these properties unless it complies with those development plans. For example, the only way the Fifth Third Bank property can be redeveloped is the new building is the same use and is located on the same footprint as the existing bank building. This is making the property unattractive to potential redevelopers. Therefore, staff is of the opinion that we should apply for a map amendment to change the zone of the Fifth Third and the Aldi property from NC with a development plan to NC without a development plan. This change would then make these properties the same as all the other properties along Dixie Highway that is within the NC zone. Staff also feels that the zone should be changed on the property at 4408 Dixie Highway. This is the property that we spoke about last year that used to be occupied by the dog groomer. This property is now owned by Hagadorns, whose intention is to tear it down. We could have a committee meeting to discuss these issues in more detail, but the committee feels since we have talked about the 4408 Dixie property last year and we're in favor of changing the zone, that the property will be raised, plus changing the zone on the Fifth Third and Aldi property to eliminate the development plan would make it more attractive to future development. We should authorize Dave Hahn to file an application with the KCPC to make these changes. In our recommendation, Jack will read the resolution under the legislation section of the agenda tonight, giving Dave necessary application with the KCPC. I don't know if anybody was up there, but I was up there this past Saturday and was watching our fire department practice on that house. And they weren't lighting no fires or anything. It was raining, but these poor firemen out in this rain going in and out of his house carrying these big hoses and everything in and out of that house. And there was a garage back there that when I went up there on Sunday, the garage was gone. They towed the garage away evidently. Someone coming with a big truck picked up the garage, put it on, and towed it away, so we don't have to tear that down. But they are going to have practice in that house for a while, and then it is going to be razed, so that's what we want to change so we can sell these pieces of property, because right now we can't sell them as the way they are.
Right.
And also, I remind the city council that we need to have a committee meeting on October 20th to discuss the Smith towing request to rezone their property on Dollwork Drive. We were all talking about that. They will be here along with Corporates will be here also to discuss that, so.
Good.
And that's the end of my report, unless David has something.
I don't have anything to add. I just wanted to, just for further clarification on the Fifth Third and Aldi thing, that is very similar to what we, I believe we're going to have a reading tonight with the Tom Gill part up there. It's the same thing where there was a development plan and a development plan agreement that was approved, and that's all that can be developed on those properties. So it's difficult in getting somebody new to come into those sorts of places with that development.
You said Hagador owns that?
The pet groomer. The pet groomer building that the fire department's training in.
Okay. When Hagadorns bought that property, they wanted, they want another piece of property next to the AccuTech Signs property. So in order to make it attractive to AccuTech Signs, they bought the Hagador property to give some property to AccuTech Signs. So it's going to be a trade-off once they get it all settled, but Hagadorns did buy the dog groomers, and he's going to tear it up. It's probably going to just turn into a parking lot.
Okay, okay, I see.
Not a very big lot that somebody could build one on.
But we got rid of that ugly house. We're going to get rid of it.
Amen.
And while we're on it, down on Graves and Woodward Avenue and Division Street, if you've not seen that yet, that house has been razed and completely leveled off.
Drawled and seated.
Drawled and everything, and ready to go, and it looks really nice, so.
Which house?
That's the property on the corner of Woodward and Division Street.
That was the property that was donated to us.
It was donated to us from FHA or HUD. Yes.
Okay.
So we're cleaning some of it up.
Yeah. I was also surprised to see that white house on Commonwealth, next to the yellow house, the Deener.
And you know who lives there?
Yeah.
Brian Deener.
Brian Deener, yeah.
He bought that place and tore it down.
Yeah, did you see though? I mean, he put turf in there and a fence up, and it really looks beautiful.
He did a nice job.
Yeah, he did.
His home is huge.
Just made his property worth a lot more money.
I'd say.
All right, then the next item on the agenda is our progress in revitalization.
Mr. Cahill, Mrs. Pitts?
Let's see, a few things. I think Kathy mentioned this already about the city would like for residents to complete the citizen satisfaction survey that was included in their tax bills. The survey can also be assessed via the website and on the city's Facebook page. The survey portal will be available until November 1st, so if you want any, to have your input, then now's time to do it. The city is soliciting for volunteers to help out with Monster House. I think that's been mentioned too. Also, the city is hosting its first ever municipal government academy. It consists of five consecutive weeks of study during which participants will learn about each facet of the city government. The group will begin meeting here at the city building on Thursday, October 22nd from 6:00 to 9:00. Sessions will continue on Thursday evenings with graduation and a celebration occurring on Thursday, November 19th from 6:00 to 9:00. To learn more about this, call the community liaison Becky Hopkins, or you can apply online at the city's website, and Becky's in the house. Do you have anything further to add?
I think we have a presentation from Becky this evening.
As we begin to accept and aggregate the responses from the citizen satisfaction survey, and as we've witnessed here tonight and throughout most of our meetings, we do offer an exemplary level of services, but there is one area that we have been a bit lackadaisical in presenting that image out into our public spectrum. So what I'm here to do is to talk to you today and review with you the number of graphical images that we currently utilize to represent us and stress the need for us to move forward with the creation of and adoption of a singular image that represents us. I know we just reviewed this and went through this process last year, but we've never gotten to the point where we have adopted one singular image across all of our departments that we utilize from our business cards to our emblems and patches and street signage. So what I'd like to do is to, go ahead, Sherry, give you a review of all the logos that we currently have out there that represent us. And starting from the bottom right-hand corner up to the top left-hand corner, from the oldest to the newest, the logo that represents us and is defined by ordinance as our representative logo is that on the lower right-hand corner, and that was put into effect in July of 1989. And over the years, traveling right to left, we have modified the logo based on, you know, our thought processes and trying to simplify the lines. All of these logos are represented in different venues throughout social media sites, business cards, on some of our vehicles. And, you know, you can see from the bottom right-hand corner that we tried to migrate away from the verbiage of Friendship City and changed to incorporate our Year of Incorporation, and again, simplified the lines. The two scripted fonts in the upper right-hand corner are graphic images that were created by our former web developer. We are also going through the process of having our website redeveloped. We'd like to have our logo nailed down before we go through that process in full. And most recently, last year, we came forward with three or four different options for council's consideration, with that one being chosen as the representation of our city. And the issue we're having with all of those six logos is that they are very limited in their usage. Because of the programs that they've been created in, they're not very easily scalable, and when they are scalable, it's very easily, they are very easily skewed, which is why we've held on to some of our older logos. The next slide represents all of our departmental patches. And again, you see a variance in, a really big variance with all of these. The Es are somewhat italicized, bolded, you know, there's just a lot of different color variations, and we need to nail down that to truly reflect, you know, the level of services that we deliver to our residents. Again, we have a complex logo in that the parameters of the Commonwealth are very highly detailed, and it's very difficult to replicate that, especially when you're utilizing the logo, you know, in a small scale fashion like on our business cards. The state is actually behind the fire department's patch. Some people say it looks like a golden plume. It is actually chartreuse in the true color to match our apparatus, and indeed, that is the state of Kentucky. So we'd like for everybody to kind of keep an open mind about migrating away from some of the traditional representation of the city. The next page talks about our vehicle graphics, and we have a myriad of different looks about all of our vehicles throughout all of our different departments. And while we are not advocating for any one department to abandon their unique look, we do need to have at least some components of our representative logo embedded in each department's usage of such. So we have a variance again in the font that we use and the coloration, and, you know, we're just all over the place. The last slide shows our city signage. And again, this is representative of our internal talent, and we've really exhausted the capabilities of the expertise of our in-house personnel and able to create something that truly represents us. So the point of me coming up before you tonight is to seek some support and approval for us to venture out and expend some funds, not to exceed $5,500, to engage the services of a professional graphic designer. And then after we meet with them on the department head level with the leadership team members, we would bring back to council for their approval some selections for you to consider for adaptation as to what represents us. The funds that I am asking for should be easily handled within our current budget structure and should not force us to have to amend our budget for such an expenditure. And then after, another component to consider is after the design of it itself, we would have to put into place a, you know, a tiered process in which we would migrate all of our existing, you know, paper products, patches, vehicle emblems, and street signage over a period of time to adapt to that new logo. So, any questions?
I think that is just classy right there. My biggest objection, and I'm probably one of the most, I love the United States. I love everything red, white, and blue, except that logo. It goes right through me. It burns me through to my spine. It's tacky.
Sherry, if you would go back to the first screen, depleting all six logos, and...
Don't hold back, Patty. Tell us how you feel.
What can I say? I'm not about to start now.
Aren't you the only council person sitting here that made that the official logo by ordinance?
She's been looking at it for 60 years. That is classy up there, right there.
Yeah, I think it is too.
It is, it is very difficult to replicate that with accuracy. And we have a number of neighboring cities who have also embraced utilizing the shape of the Commonwealth, indeed with a star, you know, very close to us, for example, the city of Ludlow.
What did we do last year when we picked that one at the top?
At the top left's when we all picked.
Well, that is something that we created internally, and either if we are going to embrace the utilization of that, then we need to do that across the board throughout all of our departments and utilize that on all of our signage, on all of our uniforms, patches, vehicle emblems. The problem is that it's not created in a fashion that is in a high resolution. So it's not an EPS file, it's not an Adobe Illustrator file. When we send that up for someone to print, you know, a table runner for us or anything that requires that high-resolution image, that's not something that we have the capability of creating.
You're saying all the emblems are going to look the same?
I'm saying that we are going to have, no, we are going to have a component of every emblem and patch that has a depiction of our logo in it. If you look at the city of Florence, for example, they went through a great deal of expense and time in embracing and adopting the logo that they utilize with the flag running diagonally through the middle of the word Florence. That logo is everywhere throughout the entire city. It's on their streets, it's on their signage, it is at the top of every police person's patch, it's everywhere. So, you know, not only do we have to all agree on one logo and the verbiage associated with that logo, we have to also enforce its usage across the entire spectrum.
Yeah, I think the idea is, you know, taking our existing logo to a graphic designer just to kind of input that into the different forms that it can be used would incur some expense. And for not, well, but for not a whole lot more, we can get some other ideas. And I guess the goal would be to try to get something that's bold enough to look good on a police car, but yet attractive enough to look good on our letterhead or on our website. And, you know, I think that there is, I think there is something that we can create that would be that. And, you know, the idea would be for not a whole lot more, maybe we could get some options that we can at least look at.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Renee?
I have a concern on the figure of $5,500. What happens when you get to 5,500 and you go, oh, my gosh, you know, we don't have it done yet. Let's have another 2,000. Well, we didn't get it done there. Let's have another 3,000. And if you cap it and you get 80% of the way there, and then you're like, well, you know, we just needed a little bit more. So I'm really concerned about spending that kind of money and not knowing whether it's really going to be enough or not. I have a cap on.
I saw a proposal, and Becky, I apologize for not remembering right off.
That's okay. We have, we have secured one proposal at that $5,500 range as a maximum expenditure for the recreation of our logo. We can go as low as $300 and just, you know, push it out to a web-generated version. You know, what you do is you build a brief, you basically get together as a group, and you create a vision for what represents your city. You know, we've got the railroad, we've got the arterial highways, we've got proximity to the airport. And do we want to incorporate any of that in our next version of what we look like? Or do we want to go with the simplistic Erlanger, Kentucky, and then put a motto with that? What we would like to do is to engage that professional to put forth his vision or her vision or their vision of what we iterate to them regarding what we are. We don't, I truly embrace our history in the railroad, but again, we have a community neighboring us in the city of Elsmere that has reworked their logo, and it's very well-done, very attractively done, that is a depiction of a train with a circular boundary, moving forward, making tracks. I think that we need to migrate away from the railroad being part of our logo, and I recognize how near and dear this is to everyone, but I feel like we need to simplify the look of our logo and migrate away from utilizing the Commonwealth behind the E that begins the word Erlanger. So what I would like is to bring forth a number of prof- So what I would like is to bring forth a number of professionally-created selections. We will not spend more than $5,500. I'm certain that we would get back a number of selections that we could come to some sort of consensus on, that would represent us well, that we could all agree upon. You know, if you look at the city of Fort Wright, they've recreated their logo, and it is, you know, two pine trees and a waving depiction of a highway, Fort Wright, and it's in blue and green, and it's just, it's very, it's a very visual representation of who they are. One of the gentlemen I spoke with, he liked just the simplicity and the beauty of the word Erlanger, and how much we could do with that. And Mark and I, and a couple of department heads and I, we've batted this around for quite some time now. We would like to focus in on the word Erlanger, not necessarily make it very graphical in nature and then associate a motto with it, that we could transition to whatever venue or subject matter that we're dealing with. For example, Erlanger, Kentucky, distinct by service. And believe me, that's what I'm hearing, and that's what I'm seeing when I'm aggregating all of these citizen satisfaction surveys. People are extremely satisfied with our police, fire, and public works. Erlanger, Kentucky, distinct by character. Erlanger, Kentucky, distinct by landscape. Erlanger, Kentucky, distinct by businesses. You know, distinct by residents, distinct by those who go the extra mile. I think that we need to just modernize ourselves and give ourselves a fresh image aside from the history of utilizing the Commonwealth. I'm hoping you're just open to even looking at those.
Oh, I absolutely, I absolutely.
And, you know, let me talk about...
And that's very important.
Yes, let me talk about color pattern as well. So we kind of look like the bicentennial look down there, even though that was put into place, you know...
Right.
What, 12 years after our nation's bicentennial and about eight years after our own bicentennial or centennial. The reason why we embraced the blue and tan was we, at that time, we had just moved into this facility, and the color palette of this facility was blue and tan. So that was why we went in that direction. Again, those colors seem a bit dated. We've gotten some feedback from our residents that they don't like that color combination. Again, you know, we're looking for some expertise as to, you know, what is, what's cutting-edge and state-of-the-art out there today.
I'll make a motion if that's what we need.
I'll second.
Yeah, so the motion that we are making is to go ahead and...
Engage the services of a professional designer... For $5,500.
Or less.
Always better, less.
I do have a question. Do we have any sense of, once we get a new logo, what it's going to cost to actually implement signs all over? I got to imagine that's going to be tens of thousands.
Well...
Yeah, it's hard to say without knowing what it's going to look like or how similar it might be.
Simplicity is the key here, but I don't think, you know, we are transitioning and refreshing our signage and our vehicle, fleet vehicles on a regular basis. So I would think that what the plan that we would have in place by the time we accept a logo would, would just be rolling that out as we retire existing assets. The initial upfront cost would be replacing all of our letterhead, which, you know, pretty much, we print that internally anyway, replacing all of our business cards and all of our paper products, the patches, you know, again, as we refresh our uniforms and such. So I wouldn't imagine that there would be a huge cash outlay if we just do it as we retire those assets.
Is there a possibility that our sign shop might be able to be upgraded enough to utilize the new look?
Oh, yeah. They will be able to replicate anything that's professionally-created for us. It's just that the vice versa is not, in fact, the case here. We do not have the software applications, nor the graphic design expertise in-house.
I get the graphic designing aspect.
We'll be able to replicate anything that's created for us. It's just that when it comes to us as a final product, it won't be skewable pictures of logos. It will be set, and, you know, we'll have to come up with some guidelines as to its usage and not stray from its color pattern.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so we have a motion by Patty. Am I second by Mr. Dunhoff? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented? Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, then, we move on to the reports of representatives. Are there any reports from our representatives this evening? Mrs. Skidmore?
Real quick, I'll be brief. Kent County Alliance met for their yearly meeting, and they elected new officers and stuff, and they're trying to, their biggest, their biggest projects are the marijuana, the heroin, the alcohol, and the tobacco. And they mentioned the idea that a lot of times, they're seeing a lot of times when a parent will tell a child, you see that officer over there? If you're not good, he's going to get you. And we want to get rid of, we want to get rid of that. We want to get rid of that mentality and do something to enforce the idea that the officer is actually their friend. So that's, that was basically kind of it in a nutshell.
Where did the, and I've only seen one, and I'd like to see more, where did the sign come from? Northern Kentucky hates heroin.
Oh, yeah.
I love that sign.
Actually, a website. You can actually go on, I think you can get the signs off of that website.
It's on Commonwealth, in my, my neighbor's yard. I mean, she owns the property.
Yep.
But I would...
You want one for your yard?
I would probably put one in my yard. Right next to the school, absolutely. I'll see what I can do. Okay, bye.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the reports of our city operations. City engineer, Mr. Vioxx, is not here this evening, so we'll move on to our city attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
It's been such a short meeting, I'll make sure I'll take some time.
Really?
Give a legal theory, full history of... So, two things I just wanted to briefly mention. You'll notice tonight that you guys are, as part of the legislative session, are resolutions which are requesting Mr. Hahn as the person, you're designated to make the applications with planning and zoning and PDS. And, and that's really no different procedurally than from what Erlanger's always done in the past. We've just had those as part of our minutes. It was something Mr. Hahn, Mr. Fields, and I just kind of decided that we probably should go ahead and paper it, there's no reason not to, and 30 years down the road, it's easier to find a piece of paper saying that it was done than necessarily digging through the minutes. So again, that's just what you guys have always done, you're just going to vote on that in the legislative session. Secondly, I'm sure most of you read the email and memo from Mr. Wickman as it relates to the SD-1 interlocal agreement. Mr. Wickman and I met last Monday, we've discussed that, all the cities are discussing this, it's still sort of a fluid process. I have requested either the mayor or other council members I've spoken with to put it on a committee meeting for, in two weeks to discuss that issue, just so that everybody is on the same page with it, and, you know, we can, you guys then can decide what you want to do after we have a little bit, get a little bit more due diligence, a little bit more information.
All right. City Council Attorney?
Yes, sir. I just wanted some clarification on the motion was made about the invoices, and I just wanted to address the difficultness that has come into the whole process. I think it's unnecessary, I think it's confusing. I speak on behalf of my father due to this. If you look at the contract, the contract in regard to the city council attorney position indicates that an invoice shall be submitted within 10 days of the previous calendar month that itemizes time spent, hours spent, so forth and so on, which has grown into a report that I find difficult to prepare and to discern. The other problem that exists with preparing that report is, you know, it's for a month, which is hard when there is fluidity as far as invoices out, money in, both from the city of Erlanger and from the collection side of it. So it's just hard to put it into one report, and I think it's become unsustainable and unmanageable. So I would first like to have that addressed either in committee or otherwise. And then I would also like the clarification on the motion that was made. I don't know if it was just the two invoices today that were submitted by email right before the meeting for October 6th. We have invoices outstanding from July 27th, and I would like all invoices to be approved or motioned or whatever needs to be done so that we can get caught up. Invoices are supposed to be paid within 20 days of when they're received, and that's not taking place either. And that is folding into the problem of the report, because you can't just look at it in a bubble. It's just, it's too hard to do, and it just doesn't make any sense. So if there's any clarification that be given, I would appreciate it.
No, I mean, there was a motion made in last month to approve those invoices.
Right. Yeah.
Well, all of the invoices, I'm making things more difficult, none of the invoices by contract need to be approved. So that is also something, that's an animal that's created itself. Invoices don't need to be approved by the contract. They are supposed to be submitted and paid within 20 days. There is no approval process. We're supposed to submit an invoice, it's supposed to itemize, you know, and that's it. And that's why it's kind of grown into...
Yeah, we started the approval process at the recommendation of Frank, that city council approve those.
Well, and I don't know that it's all of them, I think that is just the city council retainer invoice, so that is one of the invoices. You know, again, I think it's, it's become unmanageable on Erlanger's side and on our side, so I just think it needs to be addressed in some way.
I think the, I think you've recommended the proper thing in addressing it in the committee meeting, and I would prefer that Mark be here as well, because Mark was the driver behind the report that's created. I think that's what you're talking about, the report regarding the different liens that we have out there.
That's not what I'm talking about. That's something completely different.
Oh, okay.
We keep that, we've always kept that, we will continue to keep that. When we met, there was a suggestion that we put more information into that about what's going on. We've done that.
Okay, that's okay.
So that's, that's ongoing. That's not a problem. The report that I'm talking about is the one-page report that itemizes hours and collection, for collection, for retainer, and for correspondence and document preparation, which are the three different things that we're constantly working on, and to put those into one report, you just can't do it, I don't think. I just...
And I would agree. I had recommended at one point that the collection items be, you know, that, those hours, those monies be taken out, but Frank said he didn't want to do it yet.
Okay. I don't think there's a need for the report, everything's on the invoices, so I don't knew, I don't know why we need one report trying to fold it all in together, because it's just, it's difficult.
Right now, I've got, I've got basically three different invoice, I mean, three different types of invoice in my hands right now. One is the, the retainer.
Yes.
And then one...
That is a monthly invoice for the previous month.
Yes. Right. That's pretty simple.
Yes.
One is additional work, so correspondence, document review, and preparation, so that's a separate one.
And that's billed at a different rate per the contract, so that's why it is separated out.
Okay, then that's great.
Okay.
That's easy. And then the other, I've got a batch of six invoices then that deal with lien collection, and I, I apologize, Kim, I, I have back to...
July 27th.
I do, yeah, you're right, I do have all the way back to July 27th.
Which I don't quite, I mean, there have been invoices paid in between there, so I don't know, there's not, not any kind of rhyme or reason to how they're being satisfied, and it's, it's hard to keep track of, obviously. Those are paid, we collect the money, we submit the money to Erlanger with an invoice that has a breakdown of, this is what's being paid, which are delinquent taxes and collections and fees for recording and releasing liens, and then interest and our fee in a total amount due. We submit that with the payment, with our invoice at the time, requesting that we be reimbursed for the money that we've collected. So that's, that's the biggest lag, for whatever reason, I don't know. And that's obviously hard to keep track of, because it doesn't happen just within a month, it's continual.
Okay.
Well, what do we need to do to fix that?
Yeah, that's what I...
Do we need to make a motion, or are you going to take care of it, or I don't...
Well, yeah, I guess I apologize to council and to Mrs. Quinn, because the first I saw any of these invoices was today.
No, the July 27th would have been mailed on July 27th.
Well, I mean, but it doesn't come to me.
Okay, well, I don't know what the process is here, but it gets done.
I was trying to think if it was yesterday, or it was today, right, Greg? Okay. So, I mean, I think we just need to kind of get into a, I think we can get everything caught up here, so that now we're, once we, once we get caught up now, then we are kind of on a...
And then you get the invoice, you have 12 days to pay it.
Clean slate, yeah. And then I think that...
Exactly. There shouldn't, I think the approval process...
We can get in a process of doing this monthly.
Well, the approval, there should, there is no approval process. I don't think there's any reason to have the approval process, especially on the collections. I mean, it shouldn't even be addressed, and it's not addressed, it's never been addressed that way, and it's not addressed in the contracts, and it just delays everything.
This is going to be brought up in the, in the committee meeting, because I told you today I was going to bring it up.
Well, I mean, it's no news to anybody that this is definitely an odd situation.
I know, we don't really do it.
And the contract that was created has a lot of very difficult language in it, in that, you know, okay, for one, it's a contract that the mayor has to sign in order to initiate, but the mayor doesn't have the power to be able to terminate it. So we've created an animal here that I feel the need to seek the guidance, to seek the approval of council, and it's not just me, I'm saying, moving forward in the future forever. You know, we're talking about it, we've got a very odd...
Yeah, so let me just jump in from a legal perspective. Obviously, you know, I think that council needs to make a decision at a committee meeting as to how they want the city to handle these invoices, because I think what the mayor is stating is that this is the council's creation, and I think that the city doesn't want to step on council's toes. Now, that being said, council can pretty much decide however they want. If they want the invoices to be routinely paid every 20 days, and you get a copy of them, and only if you guys object are they brought up in a meeting. I mean, there's, you can handle this however you want.
That's exactly what I brought up to the mayor this afternoon, when I talked to him about, let's put this in committee next week, that way everybody can talk about it, get an idea of what we're dealing with, and we don't have to sit here and hash it out with everybody, because we're not going to get it every night on this.
That's right.
With Mark being here and everybody being here, Frank being here, we can do this on the 20th.
Okay. I think that's...
And you guys have the full authority to handle it however you want to.
I think we need to pay the back bills, though, get those paid, get them caught up to date, and we'll move on forward.
Yeah, so going back to July 27th, if you haven't seen these, we've got, this is a series of lien collection issues on different properties. The six are six different properties, ranging from $246 to, the highest one is $409. Okay, so these are relatively small.
And this, that, that contract is with the executive, so it's not something city council would be even, they would never, they never saw them before, and they never see them now. It comes to the city, and that's an executive function, and the collection, those are bills for collection, which is an executive function, which is, the contract is with the executive, so...
It has the same verbiage as the other contract, though.
It doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with city council.
The termination.
We're required to approve termination of that one.
Okay, so that's termination, but what we're talking about is the billing and the paying of those invoices. So it can all be dealt with in committee, but as, yeah, as long as, if we can get caught up, that'd be great.
We're not, yeah, we're not going to get a decision on that tonight.
Right, right.
The other two invoices are the, the regular retainer amount, $2,000.
Approved, I think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a reason to itemize.
Well, I think that's what, what Kim is looking for.
They don't need to be itemized. If you can just say all invoices from July 27th to October 6th, that's satisfactory.
Okay.
Let's see how hard that is.
Okay, so can we get a motion? Motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. I don't have anything further. Thank you. I don't have anything further.
All right, then, next item on the agenda. Okay. You've heard the reports of our representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Ms. Pitts, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, correspondence. Ms. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And then we'll move on to citizen public comments. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak this evening?
She still wants to.
Two guys fell asleep.
Yeah, three hours.
Seeing none. We'll move on to bids. Are there any bids, Mrs. Hoffman? All right. Then old business. Do we have any unfinished business to report?
I think-
Seeing none, we'll move on.
Wilson took care of the old business part.
All right, how about new business? Oh, funny. New business, then. Does anyone have any new business to discuss? All right, then we'll move on to legislation.
Ms. Quinn's going for the first three.
Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving and adopting supplements to the code of ordinances of the city. This is in regard to the supplement that is done every year to bring everything up to code. This is separate an individual from the complete recodification that is going to take place.
Second reading. All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance? Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All right, then we have a roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. The next ordinance is HC-2 map amendment. Mrs. Quinn?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Earlanger County of Kenton, Kentucky for area commonly known as an approximate 10.8 acre area located at the terminus of Vioxx Road approximately 600 feet east of Houston Road from HC-2 with a development plan to HC-2 with no development plan.
All right, this is a first reading of that ordinance. All right, the next item is a municipal order amending personnel policies.
Municipal Order 10-06-2015-01, a municipal order of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the city of Earlanger personnel policies.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Blankenship. All in favor, all right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, the next item is a resolution on the Economic Development Admin Tech Assistant Grant.
City of Earlanger Resolution Number 10-06-15-01, a resolution of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for an Economic Development Administration local technical assistance grant, and upon approval, to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the United States Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, to facilitate and administer the project, and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. By summary, this allows the mayor to make application for a grant up to $100,000, in which the city would match 20%.
Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
I've read the resolution. I'm not sure what the project is, though, Mr. Mayor.
The idea would be that we would use, if we were given the grant, it would go toward the development of Houston, the extension of Houston Road leading to the Showcase Cinema site. We all know that that, that site would require the road to be improved and all the utilities to be upgraded. And what this would do is it would allow us to start some of that engineering with some of the, there have been several proposed, you know, I guess, concept layouts for the site, so we'd have a decent idea of the traffic, but still, a lot of that stuff needs to be fine-tuned. And that's what this would go to.
And that burden is 20%.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, the next item is a resolution for the map and text amendment of Kenton Land's Road.
This is Resolution Number 10-06-15-02, a resolution sponsoring a proposed zoning map amendment and text amendment whereby the city's economic director, as an agent of the city's legislative body, is authorized to apply for a zoning map amendment for 30, 33, and 37 Kenton Land's Road from Industrial Park IP-1 to Industrial Park IP-4, and a text amendment eliminating the text of Earlanger IP-4 Zone prohibiting outdoor activity and instead creating text that allows outdoor activity provided it is screened from view from adjoining properties and right-ofways.
Is everybody familiar with?
Reference the palettes?
The palettes outside going to be covered so we can't sit, yeah.
That's correct. All right, do I entertain a motion? Do we accept this resolution? Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, the next item is a resolution, the map amendment, removing the development plans tentative.
This is Resolution Number 10-06-15-03, a resolution sponsoring a proposed zoning map amendment, requesting the city's economic director, as an agent of the city's legislative body, to authorize him to apply for a zoning map amendment for the properties located at Dixie and Cave Run, one formerly of Fifth Third Bank, and the other presently in Aldi, from Neighborhood Commercial with a development plan to Neighborhood Commercial without a develop, development plan, and simultaneous therewith, an application for a zoning map amendment for 4408 Dixie Highway to Neighborhood Commercial. This is what Mr. Hahn previously has discussed.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Mr. Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, with that, can I get a motion that we adjourn?
Absolutely not.
Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Blankenship. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.